Welcome to the one o'clock special meeting by the Atkins on the study of the County Road 30A. Please silence your phones at this time and Mr. Jones, will you give us some preliminary information?
Yes ma'am. You've got two presentations to be made today, both will be by representatives from Atkins Engineering, one on County Road 30A and the other on Driftwood and Ellis Road. Still nothing?
I'm going to speak into this one.
Is that better?
Oh yeah.
Okay, thank you. We're here today for two presentations by Atkins Engineering, one regarding the 30A traffic study update, Phase Two, and the other Driftwood Ellis Road as a preliminary engineering evaluation. Commissioners, both of these items are that you'll be addressing are in District Five as you're all aware and will make each of you aware, Commissioner Anderson is very sick. He has spent a good bit of time in the emergency room yesterday and is certainly not able to be with us today.
Can y'all still hear?
Still can't hear?
I'm sorry, they can't hear you. I can tell by the man in the orange shirt look on his face, he couldn't hear you.
Let me try to boost myself a little bit. Commissioner Anderson, the District Five Commissioner, where both of these projects lie, is unable to be here today because he's sick. He's been sick all weekend and so we certainly understand that. But Commissioners, I think it might be prudent to take some action early at this meeting to delay any vote on either of these until Commissioner Anderson, as the District Commissioner, has had opportunity to review them and let him come back and tell you when they're ready to be voted on. That's certainly up to you as a board, but I think in deference to the Commissioners whose district they lie in and the fact that he is sick and not well, that it would be prudent to allow him the opportunity to review these prior to taking any vote on them.
Agreed with that.
And I certainly can agree with perhaps taking any vote. I don't know that we shouldn't go ahead and look at the study, let them present it, hear from the people here in the audience because they came here for that. It's unfortunate that Commissioner Anderson is ill, but I think we should take the time to listen to folks. Maybe the Ellis and Driftwood streets, excuse me, if we wanted to delay that. That's another issue, but I think the first topic, I think we should at least listen to folks.
Absolutely, I think that's a good plan.
And Commissioners, my apologies because I would agree that, yeah, I mean, we're here and we've got a reason to be here and everybody's prepared, so let's, you know, let's listen to the presentations, let those who have opportunity to speak, assuming that would be your direction as well, but that would be our recommendation is to let it move forward, so thank you Commissioner.
And could I ask Rick that if after this meeting, if perhaps it would be prudent to get Mr. Anderson a video of everything said and done here today so he could review that video of everybody and what you have to say, I think that would be, you know, prudent.
Certainly.
Do we need a motion?
I would think so, that way the folks will know what today's going to be about.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Third.
Any other comments, comments from the audience on what we are proposing? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay. Mr. Fielding, are you ready to come up? Welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you Chairman Jones, Commissioner. It's funny, I assumed everybody was here for Driftwood and Ellis, but...
I don't think so.
Does the microphone work well enough? I could lean in more?
Yes.
All right. All right, so we're here today to talk about our Phase Two update, yes ma'am?
I'm sorry, would you state your, I didn't hear your name.
Oh, I'm sorry ma'am. John Fielding from Atkins, I am traffic engineer. You hopefully have forgotten my face from the first phase of this study. But we are here today to talk about the Phase Two, the update, carrying on the recommendations that the council made as far as looking further into the feasibility of putting in some sort of diversionary road in the 30A vicinity. So without further ado, just to remind everybody of exactly where we are, obviously 30A, we studied between US 98 and US 98. The result of that was to narrow down kind of some areas that we considered areas of concern or issue, specifically around Seagrove and Seaside where we see the heaviest traffic. So with that, moving forward from Phase One where we analyze traffic volumes and operational deficiencies, the purpose of this phase is to continue to vet those alternatives, to come up with likely scenarios, potentials for impact, and kind of determine what the best process is moving forward as far as vetting social, economic, and environmental impacts. All of something that we put together is something called the Project Development Environmental Study, PDNE process. So basically what we're doing in Phase Two here is to determine the appropriate level of that is, and as you'll see later, there's many varying levels, three major ones. One thing is obviously to quantify the stakeholders that involve, what their interests are and what some potential costs of construction are and how this project might be funded. As you're all well aware, there's an extensive list of area stakeholders. Obviously Walton County owns the land, Florida Department of Environmental Protection with the Point Washington State Forest, the Forestry Service who manages that area, Water Management District who deals with the flood zones and the byways. Obviously the local communities and developments that are around there have a large stake in this. Special interest groups for 30A, there's quite a few of those that are all dedicated to preserving the ecosystem and the lifestyle that are in that area. The local residents and commercial shop owners have shown tremendous interest in this and it's been a pleasure to speak with them, as well as the utility agencies and owners who would be impacted by any potential project. Now you had also asked us to look at the feasibility of an extension of Seacrest Drive over near Watersound Parkway and what impact that might have. We did kind of look at, take a look at that from a traffic level. It doesn't show much improvement, honestly. One of the keys there is that Watersound Parkway currently exists and that it serves that function. So while it does have very limited or low impact on any part of the forestry or any part of development, one thing it doesn't do is really carry that traffic and provide additional outlet because it's just not geographically separated from Watersound Parkway. We also thought there were some other potential detriments to consider and the possibility of carrying something like that forward. You know, obviously that's an extension of a residential street. We've seen a lot of pushback on being in or adjacent to residential areas, so it's just some caution we would throw out there. With that, specifically you asked us to carry forward Alternative Four and to look at some basic impact levels and potential environmental processes that would be followed for that. So just to briefly review, Alternative Four is an east-west facility connecting east of 395 somewhere and connecting, I'm sorry, east of 395 on 30A somewhere and connecting to 395 somewhere north of 30A. And we believe it provides relief to the County Road 395 intersection and improves emergency services accesses for those areas east of Seagrove. Briefly, I'd like to run through kind of what we do at this phase. A lot of what we do is from a very macro level to step back and look at what are our constraints. We call this constraint mapping because we're not creative types. But essentially this is to get wetlands and floodplains, known environmental areas, endangered species, things like that on a map. As you can see, kind of an example here that's of that area, and determine what are some potential routes through there that sort of avoid these major impacts and what are the challenges and the obstacles to overcome when we do that. So we look at where the residential developments are, where platted areas are, where the existing roads are, wetlands, floodplains, and critical habitats, as I mentioned. And the outcome of that is to essentially brainstorm any one of a number of different alignments, which we've kind of done at a very preliminary level here with Alternative Four, to sort of snake through these constraints and to avoid impacts as much as possible. So with that in mind, we kind of set some basic design parameters, design speed. We would try to keep traffic speeds low, but we would reasonably accommodate up to 55 miles an hour because people drive fast. And then we kind of estimate what's necessary to carry that. We develop these alignments and from those alignments, we estimate impacts, costs, and what the level of effort is to vet these through different agencies. Keys to the land impacts really are mostly determined around the road length, the road right-of-way, the amount of wetlands and floodplains that crosses. And also something from talking with the foresters here today, something we hadn't anticipated is how much does this impact their mission and does it isolate lands that the forestry can either no longer effectively manage or cannot really access? Now, just as a baseline for what we would be doing this analysis on, what you're seeing here is kind of a typical section of the roadway that we would be proposing. It includes two 11-foot vehicle lanes with paved shoulders and a 10-foot multi-use trail that would connect to the trail that's on 30A up to appropriate facilities on the other side and kind of help to complete some multimodal loops, which we feel is very important. Drainage, we would expect to collect in roadside ditches, as you're all well aware in this area, it's very flat, water tends to stage up. We think it's a good candidate area for putting in something like what we call linear retention where we direct water off the road and hold it and let it dissipate into the sandy soils. Another consideration, because it's been apparent to us that we don't want to see development occur along this road, is that we would put in wildlife fencing to kind of restrict those access and then put in appropriate numbers of crossings for these wildlife so that they can maintain flow back and forth across this roadway without being in conflict with the vehicles, without being impacted by them as much as possible. So with that in mind, working from the basic number of different alternatives, we came up with alignment alternatives A through F as a means of kind of quantifying what our general area of impact may be. So briefly, I'll run through these. Alignment 4A, you can see snakes through the wetland areas, connects north of Nature Walk. All of these alignments, by the way, start from around Ryan Street and connect north of Nature Walk just as a means of providing a first basis for establishing some guesses at what these impacts would be. So in general, this alignment is a little under three and a quarter miles. It impacts about 40 acres of what we would consider needed for the right-of-way, which is 100 feet wide, runs over about nine acres to 10 acres of wetlands and about 13 acres of floodplain. It also isolates about 415 acres of forestry land that makes it difficult for them to manage. As you could look at this map, you can imagine that when it comes to managing the land specifically, as we were told with controlled burns, you need a favorable wind in a direction. You need to start at basically your limits of your burn and work away from development. With this alignment being in here, it creates another issue there and that it's sort of a constraint to that mission, so to speak. So when I talk about isolated acres of forestry, what I'm talking about is area west of a proposed alignment and east of all the residential development. Now for a cost, we would estimate that something along this line would be about $7.5 million in construction, anywhere between $700,000 to $1 million in land acquisitions, and anywhere from a million to as much as $3 million in mitigation for the wetlands-impacted forestry lands and floodplain crossings. Moving on from that one, you can see another alignment that was vetted, what we call 4B. Three and a third miles, very similar numbers for forestry impact and right-of-way, about 40 acres, 11 acres of wetlands, about 13 acres of floodplains. And this one isolates about 610 acres of forestry. And keep in mind, the reason behind developing these alternatives is to come up with range targets of what we think it may take. So this one's much closer to about $8 million in construction primarily because it's slightly longer. It could go as much as $5 million in mitigations and acquisitions. Same process followed with 4C, a little bit straighter path, 3.13 miles, about 40 acres of right-of-way is what they all require, 7.3 million in construction and about up to 6 million in mitigation just because it includes a larger section of isolated forestry lands. Similar process with 4D, although this one gets a little bit longer, 3.45 miles, three and a half miles. You can see just the different routes that it takes to snake around these in general are anywhere from three to three and a half miles. Still in the 40 to 45 acres of right-of-way needed. Same with acres of wetlands and floodplains impacts, about 10 acres of wetlands and about 12 acres of floodplains. And similar construction, 8 million in construction, up to about $6 million in mitigations. Similar with 4E, slightly shorter alignment, sneaks through, tries to follow some of the existing trails that have been put through the forest, but does the same thing, isolates about 470 acres of forestry and similar costs as well, a little over 7, 7.5 million dollars in construction and up to about $4 million in mitigation. And then the last one, alignment 4F, a little bit, like I said, a little bit straighter all around, 3.14, about 38 acres of right-of-way, and similar cost to the rest of the alignments. So what we did was to take all of those together and the different types of things that we may need to generate as we're working through a detailed design potentially and come up with an expected construction number. So what we estimate is that the total cost of the construction would be $10.9 million to about $12.1 million. That includes the roadway, the trail, linear retention, fencing, and wildlife crossings. It also includes the detailed engineering, the inspections needed once it goes through construction, as well as some mitigations. Now when it comes to acquiring the land, that's a much more unknown. As you're all well aware, that goes through, that's sort of a negotiated process with the owners of the land, both private, which I should mention, we really don't anticipate from the alignment that we looked at much impact to private lands. Probably a quarter acre, probably where it ties in down near 30A. So depending on the tie-in point, that could either be, that could be minimized down to about a quarter of an acre. So when it comes to acquisition, anywhere from $700,000 up to sort of an unknown amount because it very much depends on, are we isolating acres of forestry lands? How does DEP feel about the project? From preliminary conversations with the people in Tallahassee, they've indicated to us that they're obviously open to and willing to talk with the county about the things that the county thinks is required and they expect to be coordinated with throughout this process as appropriate and to have their inputs and say from that point. So earlier, I mentioned sort of what the environmental assessments would be, how we quantify the wetlands, the environmental, the social impacts, the traffic impacts. What we do is go through environmental assessments and these are dictated by the funding sources and the types of impacts. And there's three basic levels. At the national level, we follow a process called the Environmental Impact Statement. That's dictated by NEPA, the National Pollute Association people you're familiar with. At the state level, the Project Environmental Impact Report follows another set of criteria. It's not as stringent as the federal criteria, but follows a very similar process. And then down to what we call projects of local concern. So if there's a project that doesn't have much impact to any people, doesn't cross state lands, then we would say, sure, there's local processes that you can follow that would eliminate you from the possibility of state funds and state being involved, but would allow you to accomplish the project appropriately and let everybody have their say. So what we're recommending is that you follow the Project Environmental Impact Report. This project, regardless of where it would go in, would include impacts to state lands, which we feel would be important to follow the state process in that. It's a well-established process that the agencies are used to seeing and working with, so it sets everything up on a very standard process. It follows their criteria, almost like a checklist. As you can see on the side, there's about 22 items to cover and analyze as you move down. It allows you to quantify those impacts and to compare them. And the key being there that the hopeful outcome is, is that at the end of the day when you've looked at however many alignments, alternatives you want, you've created a matrix, you've quantified these impacts, and everybody agrees that, yes, this is the matrix we'll follow and it gives you a more impartial way of looking at the end result and saying, we believe that this one is a better alternative than these other ones for some reason. And the outcome of that is to coordinate with all these stakeholders that we mentioned earlier, especially the public, and to get environmental clearances so that everybody's aware of what's going on, has been informed and allowed their input throughout the process, and that at the end you obtain a document that says, from state agencies, from local agencies, that says, yes, we agree that this alternative is necessary, needed, and allowed. And then move forward with detailed design from that point. All of this is detailed in the Florida Department's PDNE manual. It's what describes this process. Like I said, they have a very standardized approach to doing this that people are used to seeing that we feel is beneficial in this case because it does impact state lands. So what we are recommending is that the county would follow the Project Environmental Impact Report methodology. Obviously, as we can all see, everyone's extremely interested and concerned about what goes on here. So extensive vetting through public information, allowing people to be as involved as they can at every step of the process is important. Having the community impact or input on social impacts, we feel is extremely important. Something I spend a lot of time discussing with people is the difference of opinion and social impacts, as you're all extremely well aware. Just people perceive impacts, especially social environment, much differently from one another. So allowing those people to have input early in how we evaluate that is very important. And that matters across the state, geographically, from urban centers to more rural centers to preserve areas like we have here. And as we mentioned, providing standardized, accepted documentation, the process is beneficial because it allows us at the end of the day to have a document that everyone agrees upon, hopefully, and that is accepted at the state level. And one key thing in there is that following the Project Environmental Impact Report does leave this project open for state funding sources. So having followed that process, if the county desires to pursue state funds through grants, say for instance, the TRIP Grant, Transportation Regional Incentives Program, there are funding sources available to help out projects like these and following this process keeps this project open to those funding sources and makes sure that everything's in line from what they expect to see during the grant process. So moving forward, the next steps to take would be to really define the scope of the PDNE process, Project Development Environmental Engineering process. And as you can see on this graphic to the right, it hits four major categories, planning, PDNE, design, and construction. So right now, we're basically on the boundary between planning and PDNE. Where we've determined, here's some alternatives to consider, moving forward into the PDNE processes, fleshing those things out further and getting environmental clearances for them. So obviously defining the scope of the PDNE, exactly which alternatives to compare and to evaluate from this point forward is critical. And to put that in a scope that you can then advertise for services to go through that process. And just a note on the PDNE process itself, it includes detailed environmental surveys by certified biologists. As I mentioned earlier, extensive public coordination where we get people's input on the alignments, the impacts, different tie-in points, different traffic levels, and try to really be as upfront and open about this process as possible. Includes meetings with agencies, especially in Tallahassee and in this area that are actively involved in what managing the land and the area encompasses. Vetting many different alternatives, whether that's just Alternative Four with however many different alignments, whether that's an Alternative Four, one, and a Seacrest extension. All that stuff can be evaluated against each other, all in this one process. And then we look at different funding allocations, how can this project actually be realized? And then from that point forward, start doing some preliminary design, determining detailed levels of impact and getting environmental clearances for those. And from that point forward, you move into land acquisition and detailed design to try to actually see this project over to construction. And as far as the timeline, that process can take anywhere from a year and a half up to about five years depending on everybody's anxiety levels and the state agency's ability to work with and work around some of these impacts. So it can be a little bit of an unknown, but with the unity of purpose, it moves much faster. I've also put in this presentation just for you to see, something that we call the Sample Evaluation Matrix. At the beginning of any PDNE process, we put together an evaluation matrix that we think tries to quantify the different impacts that we expect. So we talk about things like typical section factors, how fast are people traveling is usually of concern, how wide are the lanes, does it accommodate bicycles and pedestrians, which is very important in this area, how much right-of-way is needed, what types of drainage, and quantify those. We also talk about traffic, how much traffic will actually travel on this road? Is it helping us from a level of service perspective, which is some of the analysis that's already been done to date under Phase One? We talk about engineering, how long is it, how much stormwater is required? Has the public any opportunity to see benefit from community features along this roadway? Are there major culvert crossings, utilities, et cetera? And then we look at environmental and social impacts, things like social economic, the number of people affected, are there historical sites in the vicinity? Are the aesthetics beneficial to the community? Are there public facilities that will be created, recreational access areas? And then sort of quantify some social, physical effects as well. How much noise will this generate? How much surface water do we expect to see out here? Will this create any issues downstream from a water perspective? Or can we actually help solve some of those problems by creating this project? And then quantify all that into, it may sound a little crass, but dollar numbers. And dollar numbers at the end of the day, try to estimate how they compare on a one-to-one scale. How much money is really is this process going to cost us moving forward? So with all of that, thank you so much for your time. I tried to be brief, so I hope that worked. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you want to start, Commissioner Chapman?
John, you said you talked with state folks in Tallahassee?
Yes sir.
On forestry?
Yes sir.
And how did they perceive this project?
So providing them just the basic same aerial information that we showed you. Basically, the specifics we were given is that DEP, and forestry for that matter, are not going to comment on a specific alignment until it's going through the detailed environmental impact review. Now, from talking with people in Tallahassee, I just kind of off the cuff asked, it's like, tell me right now, is this feasible, is it not feasible? And they said, yes, it's feasible. What we want to see is not, I won't say universal support, but good support for the project, especially from the county. So we want to see that the county has come to us with something that says, this is exactly what we want, and then they want to be able to comment on that. And what we discussed with them for how to move forward is, once we're in that detailed process, they would like early coordination, hey, to get in front of them, to be able to sit down with some maps and say, draw out some lines and say, how does this impact you as opposed to this? Which is kind of what we've done to this point, how we found out about the isolated forestry issue. And then for them to say, yes, we're okay with something like this, no, we're not okay with something like that. But at this time, they won't provide us any detailed comments until we're in that process.
Okay. Are they still implementing the two to one? Because you're saying it's anywhere from 30 to 40 acres of right-of-way through there and they normally want two to one if you have to swap it out?
Yes sir, we were told... Yes, sir. We were told one and a half to one currently. And again, that's a negotiated process to land acquisition. I believe they have done two-to-one in the past, depends on the quality of the land.
One of the issues has been the management of the forestry, forest. And if you look at alignments four, no matter if it's A, B, or C, there's a section to the west between the residential and the road, proposed roadway, and there was a concern there that if they had to do a prescribed burn with a southwest wind, that they do, they do that to keep the smoke as best they can away from the residential areas.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, but we got a road bed here. And I don't know if the board is, because this was brought up to me about a year or so ago, when I had some discussions with forestry. I don't know if Mike was, I know Walt wasn't there. I don't remember if Mike was there during that conversation. I think they've changed supervisors there. But I proffered to them that if it was there, and at the time, we were looking at the alignment during my discussions a year or so ago, was up the power line easement that's presently there, that they do most of their prescribed burns in the fall or early winter. And that's our, supposed to be our low-traffic time during that, but
Supposedly.
Supposed to be. And I even proffered that we could shut that road down during those times that they are burning through that particular section of the road. They were not in a position at that time to accept that or not, and it's a decision to be made in Tallahassee.
Absolutely.
Do you know, if you discussed that, if it was either four or some other location alone and through the forest, that they would take that as, try to mitigate out what they have to do on the management side?
Absolutely. So, so what we have somewhat determined, and Mike was extraordinarily helpful in providing us information we didn't have before, was that isolating such a small piece of, of forestry, you know, say in the four to 800 acres, really presents some challenges to the point where it, it almost becomes unmanageable. And when you think about it from a prescribed burning perspective, you know, you may not know that you have a favorable wind until that morning. So shutting down a road that morning, while it's something that the Navy base in Eglin does to DOT all the time, is probably not, you know, is probably not favorable. Having discussed what we called alternate, alternate one as well, just from a, just from a 25,000-foot view with, with the folks in Tallahassee, they thought it would have less impact to their ability to prescribe, to do prescribed burning. But once again, they wouldn't provide detailed comment until we've really moved forward.
And alternate one was?
So alternate one, if you recall, was essentially what you described, following, following a similar path to the power line road connecting from 30A directly to US 98.
Commissioners, I'm sure y'all have got the emails like I've gotten the emails in the last week or so. Any proposed alignment that we have come up thus far has got a significant number of, I don't want it there. Now, kind of, our options are really limited. I mean, we either going through the forest, or we're gonna have to go through somebody's neighborhood, or don't do anything at all, and rework 395 and 30A, and it'll take the next three winter cycles to get that completed with the enhanced traffic that we're putting in there. So our options are really limited. Either we're gonna have to do one or the other, or do nothing and just work on 395 and 30A and deal with the traffic.
If I could comment on what you just said, I talked with Chance this morning, and he said they are working on putting in that traffic light there at 395 and, and 30A. Hopefully, we'll have it up by this fall, but yet the turning lanes will take longer. And I agree with you that that will alleviate some of this, but not all of it. And, and, you know, we can't sit here today and just consider today, or next week, or next year. We have to consider five and 10 years from now, because the decisions we make right now will affect us and, and the future. And I have my book over here. This, this book right there was the study done in 2005. So we have been at this a while. And, and I think you're right. We either decide what to do and do it, you know, if it's right, wrong, or, you know, it's wrong, maybe, but we've got to do something, you know?
Commissioners, as, as we move, if we were really focusing in on the forestry property, I still think today, and it might be even next year, I'm not sure how the state's gonna look at this. You know, there's a big question mark, as if we take this and move down the road, that if they start getting a lot of heat from the citizens over in Tallahassee, they're gonna back off. And we're gonna be right where we are today, anywhere from a year and a half, two years down the road. So we got to find another solution, if it's there. I don't see it. If you look at that first picture, I think, that was put up there that showed the areas, if you can go to your first picture, all the way back to the start Right there, that was it. Just go, one, go ahead, one. There you go. If you look at the red shaded area, that's, is what we're talking about. You see the gap between 395 and Inlet Beach?
Yep.
Reasonably, most people say, well, that's where it needs to be, but it's right through the forest. And I don't know where, I know there's some out there, I'm looking at one lady just a minute ago, we've had this conversation, she's not gonna support going through the forest. But that seems to be the only one. Correct me if I'm wrong, forestry guys, but there is still some forest land that's on both sides of either 283 and 395. Is that correct?
Probably.
There's a portion of forest land, 283 and 395, on each side of the road?
Can you repeat the road again?
283 and 395.
Yes.
Right, there is. And when you have to burn them, that road's open, isn't it?
That's correct.
That's right. And there's a big road that goes through the Apalachicola National Forest that they burn on both sides. So I'm thinking, and basically just making an observation, you've got roads already, right now, going through the forest, that are, forestry's on both sides, yet you're still able to manage that particular portion of the road, or your, your land. So I'm just wondering why this one here would be any different in your management process. I'm not asking for a response today, you guys. I'm just making a comment.
One thing I would say to that, and those, you know, I think a lot of the, you know, the difficulty in managing as far as prescribed burn was attributed mostly to Alternative Four, which is what we were, you know, focusing our discussions around. Because it is such a small, isolated amount of forestry, whereas, you know, say, say we were to consider something along the lines of Alternative One, or what I've heard referred to as the power line road, from a prescribed burning perspective, it is spaced out more like 283 to 395. You know, there's a larger piece of land in there that allows some flexibility. Or at least that's what Tallahassee told me.
Any other comments?
Yeah. We'll call it alternate one through the four, the original number one, I guess.
Power line.
The power line. The power line is already there. I mean, if you're talking about impacting the forest, it's already been impacted, because that, and I realize we're not gonna build on top of it, but we certainly would hopefully build as close to it as we could. That's only three and a quarter miles of impact to the forest, which is less, I think, than any of the others, or, you know?
I'd like to say, and I had a, I had a very brief look at it, we did not go into as much detail as we did with number four, but it was slightly shorter. I want to say it was just over two miles.
Yes.
I certainly, you know, as far as the critter crossings, you know, we did that on 331 when we did MC Davis's land. We have, not only do anybody notices them anymore, we have critter crossings there for, for the critters to get back and forth. I, I value the state land, but I also value neighborhoods and the people that live there, and then the future people that are gonna live there, because these, these neighborhoods aren't gonna get any smaller. To me, number one would be the least impact on people and actually on the state forest. It's either that, to me, or do nothing. And people are gonna look back in five years from now and say, why didn't you do something?
Sure. And, and like I'd like to point out, what we're recommending is the appropriate process to follow. So as, as you're going through the scope development, you know, you do want to describe what exactly we're narrowing down. And it can be as open-ended as, you know, study the environmental impacts of a connection between 30A and 395, which we would call alternate four. Or it could be as open as, study the impacts of the connection between 30A and either 395 or US 98, which would, you know, quote-unquote, leave us open to exploring what we'd call alternate four and alternate one. Or you could specify, you know, very specific areas where you want this study to occur.
I have one more. There again, I met with our engineers this morning. With alternate one, you will have like a direct access almost to the schools that, you know, that are there, and, and going that way. You'll have almost direct access to the sports park. And surely we will put in a bike path or a multi-use path along this road, which if we work it right, we could connect and make for the first time a, a trail that would, you know, if I started here, I'd end up here, rather than, I've got to go here and turn around on my bike and go back, because there's not connectivity. We could also work on getting connectivity for multi-use path, kids walking, you know, to school or whatever, but not, I don't guess they'd cross 98 unless they had a crossing guard. But it would connect for mamas running late in the morning, take the kids to school, but they gotta get to work. I mean, this is a direct, would be a direct access rather than taking 395 and, and forever. So, I mean, those are, I certainly respect the people that want to keep the forest natural. I certainly respect that. But, you know, in our position, we have to look at what's best for everybody concerned.
Okay, it's time to open public comments now. We have about 21 citizens that would like to speak, and we have 20 minutes. Would you, would you like to limit to two minutes or keep three minutes, stop at, at the hour, and then continue this when Commissioner Anderson is back? And two minutes, three minutes?
I'll let Mr. Chapman pull that one.
We can give three minutes and then stop at the hour, and then anyone that did not speak will pick it back up. I think that would be fair, and...
Well, if we decide not to talk about Ellis Road today, could we go ahead and continue today?
You don't want to talk about Ellis?
I, I said if we decide not to. But anyway, why don't we see where three minutes gets us?
I'm happy to come back anytime.
Right. And we, we could, I mean, I'm, I'm game with opening, keeping it going, and then after the Ellis discussion, then we'll pick up anyone else that didn't get to speak, if y'all are willing to do that. I, I know it's, once you get here, it's very important to be able to speak, and I want to honor that. So let's go ahead and get started. We'll give you three minutes. And if, if someone says something that, you know, you were gonna say ahead of you, then try not to duplicate if you can. I'm fixing to start. So Alan, you're on the list, but you're not first. Okay, Carolyn Geary.
I'm Carolyn Geary, and I live at 34 Huron Swatway in Santa Rosa Beach.
Could you spell your last name, please?
G-E-A-R-Y.
Okay.
Okay. In 1996, I retired. I was living in Silicon Valley. I was a technical writer for the computer industry, and there were always beautiful places to walk outdoors there, but I didn't want to live there. So from then until 2002, when I visited Nancy James, who was living here, did I find a place that was suitable to retire. And I was overjoyed to find the beach, the lake, and the forest. And I've been enjoying these resources ever since. The places you are proposing to build roads are the places that I walk and love and video and hope that will stay forever as it was supposed to. Now, in 2007, somebody proposed, I think you were here, proposed a road along the power lines. And that's what I want to discuss, because I know that there's a big push for that particular area, to go from 30A to 98 along the power lines. The ranger's name was Tom Basil, I think, and he had the South Walton Community Council members take a walk up there. We parked on Highway 98, and we walked along. And he told about why they were refusing to build this. And it was declined, the project was declined. And I'll just read my notes from that time. He gave us a handout. It's called the Eastern Lake Proposed Road. It said, "Local forestry decision goes to the art committee and the governor and his cabinet over that." For Deer Lake State Park, there is the Department of Environmental Protection. We were standing on the world's largest Curtis sand grass area, and also the headwaters of Peach Creek and Camp Creek and Deer Lake and Eastern Lake. All these water bodies are affected by what happens in that area. Storm runoff, you're talking about, going into ditches, which will affect all our precious water bodies, even down to the Gulf from there. Nancy James, Beverly Kraska, and Kristen Ragley were some of the people that were there that I felt had a special connection to this project. Oh, he said, "The land under the power lines is not destroyed already. It is early successional stage. The wet-top pitcher plants are an endangered species." And he gave us a map showing where they were located. And they're all along, they're not only right under the power lines there. And the Deer Lake State Park goes all the way up. Oops. Well, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would like, Commissioner, I would like to ask each person briefly, now what's your solution? What, briefly in five words, what, if, if you don't like that alternative, give me an alternative.
Get up at seven o'clock, like I do, and go to Publix and do all your recreational shopping before eight o'clock. That would help.
Thank you.
Let's open Publix up 24 hours.
Robert Reinhardt.
Chairman, I'd like to believe it's my time today, Ross Cobb. He's delayed.
No, sir. You can either speak now, or I'm gonna go down the list to the next person.
Yes.
Would you like to speak? I believe Mr. Ross Cobb is on this list, so we'll get to...
I was gonna let him.
Well, now, we're not gonna give him six, we're not gonna give him, we can't give him six minutes. So if you want to speak, come on up.
Speaker, or let someone else?
Robert.
Chairman, my name's Robert Reinhardt. Been a 20-year local resident here. Some proposals are, doesn't do anything to eliminate the problem. And as I see it as a local living here, I do just exactly what the lady does, said, on what solution. Locals go to Publix early or wherever, get in and get out. We know the traffic problem, so that's how we handle it. But if you're wanting to handle a situation to make everybody's life much easier, you cannot dump anything from 30A back onto 395, one of the only alternative routes that we have anyway. So that's just like digging another hole over here and, and creating the problem that much further down the road. So we've got to have another direct route, or if we've got to have another road, it's gotta be directly to 98. We need to try to do solutions at 395 and 30A where the problem has been for the last 10 to 12 years. Nothing has been done to that. Atkins did a study on how to alleviate that problem, and no one listened. The only solution to that is take the pedestrians and bike path people out of the equation, south side. They will be...
Listen, I know, I know you want to applaud, but that takes seconds off of the time we're allowed. And, and you're...
I'm not wanting applause.
And you're interrupting this gentleman, so please refrain or go outside to clap.
Anyway, we've had solutions to, that could have been done, and we wouldn't even be here today continuing on to trying another solution. Atkins said 80% of the problem could have been corrected with the first Atkins study on 30A and 395. You start... You started doing the electrical underground, quit. That was, we thought, locals thought, well, we're getting started. Well, wow, it just stopped. And you listened to the wrong people. You didn't listen to the people that elected. I elected every one of you ladies and gentlemen and hopefully to keep electing you. But you've got to start doing what, you pay for studies, listen to them and listen to the voters that get up here and have to come for whatever time and make complaints or make comments. It's all about a local area coming together and you people need to take a stand and push. Phone call from chairman gets the project going, not people trying to berate the commissioners to do something. Commissioners need to do something and get the projects going. Thank you.
Thank you. George, I believe it's R U L T.
George Roll. I've owned the Seagrove, Seagrove Beach Medical Clinic for 18 years and...
Sir, if you'll look at us and speak to us and then spell your last name for the...
R O L L. I've owned the Seagrove Beach Medical Clinic for the past 18 years and have watched this problem become much worse over, over the time. I don't know about the road north or south through the woods, not through the woods. What I propose is an immediate solution to solve the problem at the 395, 38 intersection. I propose that where the road, where the bike path crosses the road, you continue up one block into the woods and use the dirt roads to cross. That would take the pedestrians and the bicyclers out of that very busy intersection, reduce the threat, reduce the risk and speed people through it. Additionally, from the area where the bike path crosses and would go up into the woods, I propose you make a right turn lane to go up 395. And on the other side by the V Restaurant, I recommend that at the same place where the bike path comes down the road, you join the woods path and you make a right turn off 395 onto 38. The ideal solution would also include a south side bypass to stay out of the intersection for traffic going from west to east. I understand that's difficult because of things that the board has been through before. Right now, if I have a patient in my office that's having a heart attack during the busy time of the day, it's going to take 10 to 15 minutes minimum for an ambulance to get there. If it's really traffic heavy, there's no place for the traffic to pull off so the ambulance can get down 395. If they do somehow manage, they have to turn around and go back to that 395, 38 intersection to go north to get the patient to the hospital. I guarantee that nobody having a heart attack will survive the 25 or 30 minutes sitting at that intersection. I think that's a major factor. The second factor is we have highly congested area there with bicyclists, motorists that don't know the three-way intersection procedures and bicycles shooting in and out, pedestrians crossing at all sorts of places, makes it extremely difficult. The other end of 38, you've got buttons you push that get the light to turn. That would be a smart thing to do at this end of 38. Second, or third, right now, people learn by the middle of the week which way to go up into the dirt roads and go past that 38, 395 intersection. So every week, my traffic gets much more difficult around Tuesday or Wednesday. If we did this, we wouldn't have to be driving up that dirt road through the potholes and causing dust to be all over those people's homes. I can't imagine they like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Greg Parker. And after Greg Parker, Jim Tyson's next.
Yes, good afternoon. Greg Parker, P A R K E R. Retired Navy captain, physician and disaster preparedness expert. While I applaud the board for much of the work that has been done recently with the beach access, I think that for the last 10 to 12 years, it's very short-sighted and I'll say negligent not to look at a northwest or north-south corridor. If you had an evacuation, suddenly Emily popped up in the Gulf this morning. A no-notice hurricane or hurricane without much notice is a waiting disaster for this area. So the egress of, in particular, visitors, people who don't know the area. I get up at seven o'clock in the morning, go to Publix or I just sit somewhere so that I don't have to fight the traffic. It annoys me so much that sometimes I just leave. It's not tenable to take no action. My solution, the best one I think, is the power line and it gives you the opportunity in the future to add to it with east-west corridors. It also creates a flow pattern that is optimal during disaster times of disaster. The other thing that I would urge the board to consider is that it's not an all or none, either or. You can take and should take action at 395, 38 now, immediately, and there's some things that you can do while you also look at the north-south corridor. I think the east-west corridor is short-sighted. I think it is, will provide some relief, but it's not going to provide the relief that you want in five years. So, take some action, decide which one that you're going to do. At a minimum, you must take action at the 395, 38 intersection. I don't know whose decision it was not to be able to move the bike path to the south side. I think that that's, I'll just say political, and that's a viable solution for right now. Provide immediate relief and safety for the pedestrians. So my solution, Mr. Commander?
Yes.
Is the north-south corridor and some immediate actions at 395, 38 that don't cost that much. Put a light there, do the turn lanes and do the north-south corridor.
As I've said earlier in the meeting, maybe my mic wasn't on, Chance is here and can tell us exactly when, but we're putting in a traffic light there now. Ms. Chance, can you give me, come up and give me a timeline in the next, what, month or so?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry it will not be within a month, but we hope to have it in this, this fall, winter.
Yeah.
Atkins is also doing the engineering design for the intersection improvements here at 395 and 38. Fortunately, the permanent signal situation will work for now and through all phases of construction. So we're trying to get some plans put together to get that, get those materials secured. There will be some lead time on them, but to get that signal in with pedestrian facilities, pedestrian features within that signal and a temporary right turn lane off of 38 onto 395.
Will be sometime hopefully this fall.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we are moving on that and that will be done hopefully before the end of the year. We can all have a Christmas present.
Chance.
Did you see, that was a good turn.
Yeah, it was a good turn, yeah. Chance, maybe for the benefit of everybody in this room, this fall, after the season, we're going to be doing the, the traffic light there. Now, next fall, there'll be some additional work done and then the following fall, additional work done. And for those that's wondering, why is it taking three years to get there? This is about a nine to 10-month process and we'd have to shut that entire intersection down for nine, almost a better part of three-quarters of a year. We can't do that. So we've got to try and break it up in these three phases over the period of three years. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yes, sir, there's substantial underground work that has to be done and us shifting traffic back and forth to get those underground, underground work done is what's going to take some time. Our goal is to get some of the utilities relocated on 395 this fall. And now, when I say fall, I mean, end of the quote-unquote summer season, after Labor Day and before spring break. It's really fall, winter. So, you know, some of these things may not happen until just after the new year, but we will be done with what we're doing before spring break. So, you know, with all these improvements, we're increasing impervious surface. There's already drainage issues in and around that intersection that we need to address. Now's the time to do it while we have the whole road torn up. So, that's, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson.
I'm Jim Tyson and live in Grove by the Sea at 130 North Andalusia Avenue.
Will you spell your last name, please, for the court reporter?
T Y S O N.
Thank you.
I guess my only comments, and I'll be brief, I won't take my three minutes, but I think we need to all take a long-range look at things. And I was glad, Sarah, you did that, you're thinking that way because if we all would just stand back and look five, in five years from now, 10 years from now, there's only really one viable solution. Obviously, the traffic problem on 38 has to be solved and there's only one solution, which is the direct north-south route. So that's my solution to that. I don't think there's any viable alternative if you're looking long-range. As far as the 395 intersection, I just make one comment. I think something has to be done right now. There've been a lot of mistakes made. I think we all recognize that. I like the George Roll proposal. I don't think that's the best solution. The best solution is on the south side of 38 with the bike traffic, pedestrian traffic. But I think if we all take a long-range look at this, or a long look at it, five years, 10 years out, the solutions are fairly easy and we just need to focus and not waste a lot of time talking about it. Move forward with the north-south route and move forward with a path, pedestrian pathway on the south side of 38. It's simple. Both solutions are easy solutions. Just take a commitment by, obviously, the board. And if this was a private sector project, it wouldn't take three to five years. We'd do it in one year, both of these projects.
Okay, one more, Celeste.
And she's coming up. I want to make a statement that, you know, the board members up here, sometimes we disagree on things, but I think we all agree, we're trying to find the best solution to, you know, everyone I was up here, we're trying to find the best solution here.
Go ahead.
Celeste Cabina. There will be no roads or transportation corridors through Point Washington State Forest. I'm very familiar with the process in Tallahassee. I've talked to some of the people over there. And there is no possible way that a road through Point Washington State Forest would be a net benefit to the forest. Point Washington State Forest was purchased in 1992 with conservation and recreation land funds. Florida statute 253.034 governs how these lands can be used. It is very specific that they can only be used for the purpose for which they were acquired. The purpose is conservation and passive recreation as documented in the South Walton Ecosystem Project document and map. The Point Washington State Forest 10-year management plan was reviewed last year. I was on the review committee and have been on every management committee for the forest since it was purchased. And roads or transportation corridors are not a part of the plan and never will be. All of the current forest roads existed prior to the state purchasing the land. The power line easement was purchased by Alabama Electric from St. Joe and Emerald Coast Joint Venture back in the 1980s and the easement was there when the state acquired the land. Point Washington State Forest, east of Highway 395 and Deer Lake State Park, is the largest uninterrupted segment of conservation and passive recreation land in South Walton. We should be celebrating it and not attempting to fragment it. I handed out two maps. I don't know if you've gotten them. The first map is the area of the forest between 395 and I guess that whole area over there. And the second map is, I marks allotted on the proposed roads by Atkins. I didn't hear him say anything about the fact that most of these roads or proposed roads are going to obliterate the recreation trails that have been there since the beginning of the forest. Also, the Cassine Garden Trail and Cypress Dome there at Cassine Gardens. There's no way that's going to happen, absolutely not. And we're also, we're not going to have the power line road. This is, that power line road came up again and again and again through the years and it's just, it's not going to happen, you know. So, the county needs to stop wasting time and money with attempts to fragment the forest with roads or any other transportation corridor. And I think what you need to do is fix the intersection, that's, you know, given, and the only north-south road you have a prayer for is that eastern boundary.
Thank you. We're going to, we're going to move on now to Driftwood and Ellis Road and then we will come back and the next speaker when we come back will be Dave. So, could we have Atkins come up now and present the Driftwood and Ellis project, please?
Could, could I ask for a show of hands for people that are here today on Driftwood and Ellis?
Yes.
Just for my, okay.
They're all coming in now.
Oh, okay. So we're like playing musical chairs.
Are you Mr. Morgan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can just give everybody just a few minutes to clear out and...
Okay.
Okay. Could everybody get a little bit quiet, please?
Yep. Could we have people outside be quiet, please?
See, slide them out if you don't...
Because I can't hear well. Only thing that works on me is my nose.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. I'm Kevin Morgan with Atkins, here to present Driftwood and Ellis preliminary engineering evaluation that we did for the county. Every project starts with objective. The objective of this project was...
Want to talk, please step outside.
The objective of this project was to improve the drainage, existing drainage that's out there now, reduce flooding. Byproduct of this project was to look at pedestrian features and also look at bicycle features as well. Last year, county staff completed phase one of this project, which was development of concepts, gather information and also do a public meeting. Currently, we're in phase two of this project, which Atkins was involved with, which was the preliminary engineering evaluation, the cost estimate. We also did a public meeting and we did alternative analysis. Phase three, if recommended by the board, would go into engineering design, construction plans and permitting. And then finally in phase four, we'd go into construction. Now, Atkins' project task for this, for Driftwood and Ellis was to survey each of the roadways so we could have existing elevations and data of what's out there currently today. Geotechnical, we did preliminary soil borings on each of the roadways. We did, conducted an environmental review and also looked at the improvements proposed on US, on US 98. The roadway analysis considered was the existing traffic patterns, looking at roadway alternatives, evaluate the pedestrian bicycle features, possibilities, and also identify right-of-way or temporary construction easement needs. Did some drainage modeling, which included delineating the basins, calculating swarm runoff and looking at drainage solutions. As you see here, real quick, the existing conditions on both Driftwood and Ellis that you can see from the photos here, both of them are a two-lane roadway. Right-of-way is about 33 feet, which is pretty, pretty narrow right now. Roadway width is about 18 to 22 feet, which gives you about nine to 11-foot travel lanes. Cross slopes vary throughout the road. Limited bicycle and pedestrian features. There's a multi-use trail on Scenic 98. With the improvements also to US 98 with the six-lane widening, they will have bicycle features and they will have sidewalks included on that project. Utilities that are currently out there include underground, which is your water and sewer, your buried telephone, gas, your overhead would be your cable, communication and power. Now, we looked at the existing tra... The medians are unrestricted, meaning that you can do a left, a right onto US 98 currently. Side streets within the project, you've got Payne and you've got Bradley. Both of those are four-way stops, both Ellis and Driftwood. Information that we found for traff, traffic crashes indicated that there are no pedestrian accidents currently. The annual average daily traffic out there, you can see that US 98 has a significant amount of traffic, which is understandable. But Driftwood and Ellis have annual traffic of about 1,500, which is considered a low-volume road. Scenic 98 has about 9,700. Now, the roadway improvements that we looked at, we evaluated three alternative designs, tried to standardize the travel lanes, the cross slopes, improve safety, evaluate the need for pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and like I said, identify the traffic, the right-of-way, and any kind of temporary easements that might be needed throughout. Now, alternate number one is a two-lane urban roadway, nine-foot travel lanes, curb and gutter, with a sidewalk that would be situated on one side of the road. This would be utilized for both Driftwood and Ellis. Now, some of the advantages of this alternate is that you would provide the existing travel that you have out there now, you maintain the two-lane travel lanes, there'd be no change or any additional volumes of traffic going onto the side streets, and also you would provide pedestrian features with the sidewalk. Now, some of the disadvantages of this alternate would be that we would not provide any kind of bicycle facilities for this project. There is a potential that we would have some right-of-way impacts. Most of the driveways would require some kind of temporary construction easement to tie into the existing driveways, and then this one has a higher cost, which I'll talk about later. Alternate number two would utilize a one-way road from Scenic 98 to Bradley Street. This would be a 12-foot of single lane with an eight-foot multi-use path, which could be used for both bicyclists and for pedestrians. Now, from Brantley to US 98, we would use similar typical that we had in alternate number one with the two-lane roadway, a single five-foot sidewalk on one side. And this slide right here just kind of shows you the traffic pattern for alternate number two. Driftwood, you would have from Scenic 98 to Bradley, you would have a northbound movement one-way, and then from Bradley to US 98 would be a two-lane movement. Similar for Ellis, you would have a southbound movement from Bradley south to Scenic 98 only. Now, the advantages of alternate number two would be that you would have that multi-use path, which would give you your pedestrian and bicycle facilities. The typical is slightly, slightly less than alternate number one, so you'd minimize those right-of-way impacts, and you have a slightly smaller cost for this one compared to alternate number one. Some disadvantages for this alternate number two would be, is that with the single one-way facility, it almost acts like a alleyway, so traffic speeds typically be a little bit higher in those areas. You know, vehicles seem to think that they can go faster in those areas.
Could you use speed tables?
Yes, yes, we could add speed tables, and obviously, we would add the appropriate signage as well, but you could do that. Increased volumes, another disadvantage of this one is that you would increase traffic volumes on the side streets of Payne and Brantley Street. Like we talked about with any one-way section, you have the possibility of having wrong-way movements. We would sign it appropriately, but that's always a concern. Now, alternate number, alternate number three would be just your milling and resurfacing, standardizing the existing lanes, doing some overbuild to kind of correct the cross slope and providing some shallow swells on the outside of, of the travel lanes. So it'd be no pedestrian features within this alternate. But you would maintain, the positives is that you would maintain the two-way traffic, no impacts to right-of-way. You standardized lanes and travel lanes, and obviously, you would reduce the cost significantly with something like that, this alternative. Some of the disadvantages is just with, you're having shallow swells on either side of the roadway, you have to have drainage features, drainage inlets on either side of the roadway, so you'll increase those impacts to utilities. Also, you don't provide the pedestrian or bicycle features that you, that we wanted to improve as part of this project.
What about flooding? That's one of the reasons we looked at this project.
Right, right, and I've got...
With alternate three?
With alternate three, we would provide the drainage, similar to alternate one and two, we would provide that drainage in there. It'd just be more drainage, so there'd be more costs associated with it.
Is this using swells, or is it using a combination of curb and gutter?
It would be swells. Obviously, out there, there's a high volume of driveways, but essentially, where we could fit in the drainage, we'd fit in the drainage with swells.
We wouldn't pipe it?
We would pipe it.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Now, one thing we did look at as far as for the US 98 construction was what kind of impacts it does have to Driftwood and Ellis. And with Driftwood Road, the median opening is now becomes similar to what is here, they changed it to a T intersection, but essentially, you're still allowed to make a left out going westbound on US 98. One thing that did come out of the public meeting was the concern with stacking on Driftwood for people trying to make a right turn. So we think that we're working with the county that we could add a right turn for that movement. Ellis would not allow that westbound or a left out of Ellis onto US 98, it would be a right movement only. Now, drainage, I know that was one of the, the main concerns for this project, obviously, is drainage. The existing conditions out there, there really is no defined drainage system out there currently. Stormwater treatment is not being provided for the roadway. However, there are some newer developments that do have some stormwater facilities on site, but they're minimal. This is a closed basin for the majority of this project. The geotech that we did within this area showed that throughout this project, the high water table that you have on this roadway, so it varies between six to two feet, depending on where you are along this roadway, so you can see just how high the, the water table is throughout this area.
Was that six feet or six inches?
It's six feet, when, actually, it's a little bit higher when you get closer to the beach, you wouldn't think that normally, but it is. But as you get closer to 98, it does reduce significantly. We looked, I also looked at the US 98 plans to see what they were doing for stormwater treatment. They're going to collect all their runoff and take it to Stormwater Pond, located on the north side of US 98. They'll treat their, their runoff and convey it to a drainage ditch, the large drainage ditch along Emerald Bay Golf Course. Now, this right here just shows you the existing drainage basin that we have out there currently today. Driftwood is approximately 17 acres of drainage basin. The watershed for the other roadway is about seven, so Ellis has slightly less. You can see on here, I show the DOT pond, and it'll be piped to the drainage outfall that's located adjacent to the golf course, which ultimately goes out to the bay. Drainage improvements, obviously, the county wants to reduce the flooding in this area. We wanted to try to provide some kind of stormwater treatment, if possible, and look at stormwater alternatives. Option one was utilizing underground exfiltration, and option two was your standard storm drain system with your inlets, your concrete pipe, and then to an outfall. And like I said before, because of the high water table, exfiltration could only be used in a portion of this roadway. The advantages of this is obviously, the exfiltration will provide you some stormwater treatment, but it will only provide minor improvements because we can't provide enough storage for the water that's in these areas. The disadvantages of this project, obviously, with exfiltration, the maintenance is, is greater for than a standard storm drain system. The high water table, like I discussed, only allows you to do a portion of the roadway, and there are greater impacts to utilities. The exfiltration has a bigger footprint, so you're talking about possibly impacting more utilities underground. Now, option two is just your standard storm drain system. It'll provide a positive outfall, which would go to the DOT outfall, will reduce the flooding, and will have less maintenance for the county. Some disadvantages of this is it does not provide any stormwater treatment, and it does have a higher cost associated with it. The drainage outfall that I was talking about is the DOT drainage outfall. We've spoken with DOT about it. Conceptually, they agree that there could be some, a partnership with them to add a storm drain pipe along the existing drainage ditch and provide an outfall to the bay. We did look at several options, including improving the existing drainage ditch. However, cheap power, gabion baskets would be required just to provide that additional footprint and capacity in the ditch. That cost right there is just not feasible to do that option. So what we would recommend is that you would pipe it along the existing FDOT easement and then out to the bay. Now, project meeting, we did have a project meet, a public meeting on April 20th, where we presented a formal presentation to the public. We also provided exhibits and comment forums to the public. We received approximately 29 comments from the public, which were either written or emailed in. Most of the comments were opposed to the two-lane, or to the one-way roadway. We did have a few, I would say four or five, comments that did request they liked the one-way access, but most in general, the concerns was the drainage and also concerns with pedestrians. Project costs, we did a cost for each of the alternates. As you see here, alternate number one is about four and a half, four, $4.6 million. Alternate number two is slightly less, at about $4.4 million, and alternate number three is the least, with about $4 million. And this could be phased, obviously, this is a substantial cost, and we understand that, but you could phase this with doing the improvements to the outfall pipe first, and then as you do that, you could work your way towards Driftwood, and then eventually into, onto Ellis, if you wanted to. Evaluation, evaluation ranking, we tried to look at each of the alternates as far as a ranking. As you see here, alternate number one ranked the best at 23 points. Some of the things that were against this alternate was the construction cost and impacts, construction impacts. And when we say construction impacts, we're talking about, you know, building the, building the roadway and also impacting driveways. Each of the driveways would have to be reconstructed along the project. Alternate number two would be slightly less impacts with those. Alternate number three, some of the negatives on it was that it did not provide you the drainage, or the pedestrian or bicycle features that, you know, were mentioned in our comments and also mentioned by county staff as, as willing to add. You know, the impacts for drainage, drainage at a number four because of the impacts to utilities and the amount of drainage, additional drainage that would be needed for option number three. Recommendations to the board that Atkins would provide is that, that you would go forward, move forward with was alternate number one. However, we would look for the Commissioners and the county to provide the recommendation to us, but that's what we would recommend do because it maintains that two-lane pattern that exists existing out there, and also provides you some pedestrian features with the five-foot sidewalk. With that, I open up to questions.
And then it would also incorporate the drainage.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Including that would be the drainage.
Any other questions, comments?
That's, that's the primary reason these were on the books, or brought forward is because of the drainage concern in there.
Yes, sir.
And if we're gonna, if we're not going to address that, then why are we talking?
Right, and, well, each of the alternatives addressed the drainage, so they will provide the solution for the drainage. The key is obviously the outfall, because this is a closed basin, getting that outfall situation taken care of first.
Okay, if we stay with the two lanes...
Yes, sir.
Opposite, we're going to be having to work within a third of three-foot right-of-way, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be close. Is there a possibility there may be some impact on some of the landowners to that right-of-way during construction? And would we need to get construction easements from those individuals so we would not hold the process up? If we can get the easements, we can get the work done.
Right, and, and all of the, except for option alternate number three. Alternate number one, because the typical is a little bit wider than alternate number two, you do have those impacts. We've identified, because we did survey upfront, we also did roughly a 30% set plans, I guess you would say what it is, we identified upfront the right-of-way impacts, and also the temporary construction easements that would be required. Most of them, all of the temporary construction easements would be for driveways, just tying back into the driveways. But we did identify right-of-way impact, which was a minor impact at Driftwood and Scenic 98. There's a building that sits within the right-of-way, so we have to shift the road slightly there. And then also at some of the side streets, just with some radius returns, we'd impact some of that.
So as of today, we do not know if we have those right-of-way easements from those that...
Right, we have not, no, the county has not gone out and actively gotten any kind of easement or right-of-way acquisition.
Wouldn't it behoove us to have that done first to find out if it's going to work that way?
Right, we could, we could go out there and discuss it, you know, our report was to identify these locations, but we could definitely go out there with county staff or with a letter if need be, and, and meet on site and discuss each of these all impacts with the residents.
Any other questions? Public comments, Tom Terrill. And after Mr. Terrill is Jim Thine.
My primary concern, I, we own property there at Sand Prince, which is right on the corner of Driftwood and Payne, is safety. For the last four days, my wife and I have been there, and we have watched the foot traffic going up and down Driftwood in front of our condominium. There is no way for two cars going one way, each way, north and south, and for foot traffic. There's no place for foot traffic to go. Yesterday afternoon, there was a family pulling a little cart, with their kids in the cart, walking to the beach, which a lot of them are doing, walking to the beach, and there were cars coming from both directions. There was no place for the, for the pedestrians to get off the road. There was no place, none. They finally, there is a vacant lot which is up for construction right to the south of, to the, south of us, but they were able to get off the road. I understand some of the opposition, they're having the roads one-way because you have to go one way to get out, to go down to supermarkets or something like that, but when you're talking about the safety of the people that are walking down that street, and that's the only place they have to go is to walk. We have three new condominiums that are being built right there on, on Driftwood. I don't know what the population of them will be, but it's going to be very significant in each one of them. And we're close enough to the beach, with very limited parking there at Pompano Joe's, that they're going to be driving, they're, they're going to be walking, and they're going to be pulling carts, and they're going to be walking their kids. So my primary concern is for safety, and I think if we have to go with one way with a, with a sidewalk on there, I think that's the proper way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thine? After Mr. Thine is Frank Day.
Commissioner's, my name's Jim Thine, T-H-Y-N-A, Nancy. I'm the president of the Sand Prince Condominium Association. Been doing that highly-paid job for about 12 years. Been doing that highly-paid job for about 12 years. I've owned there for 25 years, so I've, just as everybody here has, I've watched a small little sleepy part of the county down there go crazy over the last 20 years, and it's gonna get worse. And the condo that Tom's talking about is a 20-unit, four- and five-bedroom condos, which means if you've got four or five bedrooms, that's three or four more cars coming in. So you're talking 60 to 80 up there. Across the street is three new homes that opened up, multifamily, they got four cars in their driveway every day. From the time I started going there, I used to walk up the road. It was not well-driven, it is now. I sat out there and just watched the traffic go back on a Saturday afternoon on board, put my lawn chair out in the corner. Most of the vehicles that are what I consider to be speeding up and down are our tourists, out-of-state tags. The locals, us that live around there, we're very careful when we drive around, and probably the same over, over in Ellis. I think that no matter which alternative goes, you've got to do the sidewalks for pedestrians, and we gotta clear up the stormwater problem that we've had for years. Our condo was built in 84, and of course, there were no codes in 84, what was going on down there. And we get flooded all the time, and there's people here, including Art, that's gonna tell you about flooding all the time. So whatever alternative it is, sidewalks and stormwater drainage have to be fixed. We're gonna waste our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Summers. And after Art Summers, we have Lacy Meyer.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate y'all's time and effort that you've put into this. I can't tell you how much I do. When I drive down that road, it's basically a one-way road now, because we stop and let people pass. I tell people all the time, walk in our yard because we don't have a sidewalk. And one day, somebody's gonna get killed, and there, because I see people blow through that, the stop signs, they fly up and down the road, and so we need to do something about that. We have Blue Surf, Costa Vista, Trade Winds, and Portico, all of their water dumps over into Driftwood. And if you come out there, I can show you how they flow. Blue Surf in particular has three different exits that comes into property that's there that goes in to what's fixing to be Piper's Place. So we have some severe, and county engineers have done a marvelous job, they know all about it. But anyway, to me, I'm for the one-way best, but if we can solve the problem with the two-way street, and we got safety for the people that are there, I don't have a problem with that. But I just believe that the least impact would be the one-way street. And then a question that I, if we don't give our easements for this property, for these changes, and somebody gets hurt, are we legally responsible when somebody gets hurt? If we stop the, say, okay, you can't have my easement to put this in, are we gonna be responsible for somebody getting hurt because we stopped this project? And to me, that's a good question to ask. I don't know the answer to it, but I've been thinking about it, but with these smart lawyers, I think that we could actually be held responsible for someone getting hurt. And we have actually had one person who got hit by a truck mirror and knocked off into his yard, because I met him when I started this. So whatever we do, I will always be a good neighbor, and that I promise you I will. But I'm for the one-way street, for the drains, and I think that will be the least impact on us. But thank you very much for your time, and I yield the rest of mine.
Right. I believe we, on the one-way street, we were talking about two, two sidewalks, one on each side, I believe. Is that right, Chance?
I think it was just an eight-foot sidewalk.
Oh, eight foot instead of two?
Yes, ma'am.
I got you.
Because right now, with the normal rain, I get water in my yard draining out of the street that deep with just a normal rain shower. I had to put a gate up across my house, I built a motor around it to keep it out. I actually have a neighbor who said, well, I should get more flood insurance to expect flooding. I don't think so, because it's, these problems are easy to solve if we work together as a good group, and I think we can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lacy Meyer?
Hi, I'm Lacy Meyer, and that's M-E-Y-E-R. I live at 101 Ellis Road, and I have been there since 1986. I've lived through this road, and I'm, we've been going through this. This was, I'm more for the, about the one-way and and all that. The drainage, we have no problems down Ellis Road as far as flooding, the development, that they just finished down our road. Now, it's built so high, there is no flooding at all. In the month of June, we had the rainiest season of the year, and there was no flooding there. I do not want, I think, you know, these are old little roads, but we've, we've had no accidents. I have pedestrians that walk down, everybody's so good, all our tourists and even people that drive and live, there's no problems, there's no accidents, no one's been hurt walking these streets. Matter of fact, we're all so courteous to our tourists. I have a petition that's gone around, and I was not notified for the last meeting they had, but anyway, this is from my neighbors on Ellis Road and Driftwood, and this petition is just stating it's mostly about it would be more dangerous to one-way because people will speed down the road. And honestly, during the season, I would not be able to get out of my driveway because you're gonna have a gridlock from where the scenic beach is to where the highway is. And I had that happen to me where I couldn't even get out of my driveway. Now, the problem I have is the potential of if I have an emergency, you're gonna have a problem with the E and T or fire department coming, well, oh, we gotta go this way, go down this way to get to this person, or either I could be having a heart attack, and, oh, we have to go this way, and it's, 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 it would be crazy. And I've lived here long enough to see all this and to know. This tried two year, two times before today, and my husband, Mike Meyer, who passed away eight years ago, but they fought it before, and we've had it where it won past. Now, that was for the, the one-way, and we did, just did not want the one-way. We need to keep the flow, because honestly, you're gonna have more traffic. You cannot just stop it. I think that it would cause more accidents if we one-way it, and it would be more dangerous for our pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Hello. My name's Elena Huckabee, H-U-C-K-A-B-E-E. I have lived on Driftwood since 1991. Not once have I seen a problem with a pedestrian on our street. The only problem I see is the speeding. Putting in proper speed bumps set possibly every block would reduce the speed. Cops should be placed on Payne and Driftwood Road to monitor speeds during peak hours. This will also not only keep pedestrians safe, but will also allow responders to get to the beach quicker. If we one-way these streets, how will cops, ambulances, and first response vehicles be able to access Old 98? They will drive an unknown amount of extra time so they can get to the drowning victim, which, when saving a life, we know every second counts. I am opposed to the one-way for Driftwood and Ellis. Opal washed out Old Highway 98, a hurricane can very well do that again. How would we get to our homes and our condos if this is one-wayed? One other point to add to all of this is that vacation renters that come down here do rent mopeds, scooters, golf carts to get to the beach and to commute around the Miramar Beach area. Maybe we should look at that topic, and young kids that are sitting in the back not strapped in, don't really have any adult supervision, maybe we should look at them possibly having to sit in the front seat. That's where a real pedestrian problem lies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Tony Smith, and then Martha Goins is last. What's her name? Tony Smith.
Tony Smith, S-M-I-T-H. Okay. Like, I've lived at, on Driftwood for 30 years, and as far as I know, there's never been an incident as far as pedestrians or vehicles. Mentioning again about hurricanes, if we ever have a hurricane that impacts Old 98 and we become one-way, what do we do to get to our homes later on? In June, we had three times the rainfall on record than we've ever had. I truly don't see where there's flooding. There's some isolated areas that have had some flooding, that those issues are isolated, and I think it has to do with construction. Rerouting our traffic throughout our entire neighborhood is just gonna keep it swirling around. If you go down Payne in between Driftwood and Newman Daley, two vehicles cannot traverse at the same time because Sand Prince parking lot is so that the vehicles extend out into the street. Portico will become a shortcut. Most people will be cutting through there, including myself. We'll be using Old 98, Scenic 98, much more than we would previously, and adding more traffic to that. Coming north on Driftwood and going on to Emerald Coast Parkway, the vehicles will back up, they already do, and it'll just stack, possibly up to Bradley. I think the one-way option is just unreasonable. As far as pedestrians, we do respect the pedestrians. We slow down. A gentleman earlier said there were pedestrians walking, and they had no place to go. Well, apparently, they did. Someone stopped and let them go by. As far as bicycles and having a bicycle path, we have one on Old 98 right now, and people use the roadway. We're talking about a block and a half stretch, because there are sidewalks that lead up from Emerald Coast Parkway to Payne Street, where the new construction has gone in. Our pedestrians, again, they're visible to us when we're driving. It's not like they're just stepping out in front of us, so we know that they're there. Again, the golf carts, that's a problem. Kids are hanging off the back of them. That could be addressed at some other forum. Maybe speed bumps, like they have down at the Crab Trap, or speed humps, whatever they're referred to nowadays, would be a good idea, lowering the speed limit, and just keeping it like it is.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I'm Martha Goins, G-O-I-N-S. I live at 50 West Bradley Street. We are not in the line of fire, so to speak, on Driftwood, although we come up to our street on that. I want to be sure that where we are located, that the stormwater is addressed. I've sent letters, maps, pictures to the county, to several people, to our commissioners and so on. This has been going on for a long time, and we ask for help. Someone said they had not seen any flooding. I would invite them anytime it rains to come down and see our park. When we bought in there in the 90s, there were 18 people in the 18 residents around, and now there are like 87, and that does not include the new townhouses and things on Driftwood. We are the low point for everything around there. The parks that have been built around us, every one of them is higher than us. Driftwood is higher than us. Every bit of that water comes into our park. I'm not talking about when we have a flood like 2014. I'm talking about a regular rain. We have to put stepping stones out to even get out to the road if, if we're not going to wade water. We wade water to the mailboxes every time it rains. We've got to have some help, and I don't mean just a temporary thing. We have neighbors competing with neighbors, trying to put up little walls to make the water go somewhere else. And two things I will tell you. My husband has had a kidney transplant. He has no immune system. We have to be very careful because water literally backs up in our sewer from the storm drainage system. It not only bubbles up out at the street in front of us, but it comes into our place. We came down last Friday to find that water had come up into our shower, and so on. So this is a dangerous situation. We're also getting a lot of mold. Again, I have a personal interest in this because I'm so concerned about my husband, but we have a lot of older people in our park. And folks, all we need is an outbreak of E. coli or something else to happen. We have got to have some help to protect our property, but most of all, to protect our health. It just can't keep going this way. Every year, we get more people, more water, and we have no place to put it. We are the low point. If you wanna see water, come to our place when it rains, and I'd be happy to give you a tour. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was the last person that signed up. So are we gonna just tape this and talk about results later? I think we should, I don't know, I think we should wait maybe until they're again, provide Mr. Anderson with a copy of this tape?
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe give him time to review it, and then, I hate to make any decision without him. I agree. So we will, we will be making a decision once Commissioner Anderson has a chance to review the tape. Are you okay with that? And we will bring it up again in a public meeting and make a decision. Thank you so much for your comments and coming out. We're gonna take a 10-minute break while y'all are getting out, and then we will talk about the last issue again, starting with Mr. ... Back to order, Mr. Dave, would you come on up?
Sure.
And I enjoyed your email, it was very concise, very well done, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave Rochko.
Read it on Sunday afternoon, as you...
Oh, I know, I figured last minute, you know, like you didn't have better things to do on a Sunday.
No, no.
But, you know, I thank you all for taking the time to work on this issue, no matter how long it takes and whatever it takes should be, you know, our mantra for, for South Walton. You know, there isn't a person here that don't, doesn't believe that, that that state park, the state land there is a valuable asset. When that happened, that helped define South Walton. It helped create that buffer, that barrier, that, that area of beauty that we all love and cherish. I walk those trails, I care deeply about them. However, over the years, you look at the history, the history of how busy we've, the, the traffic situation has increased year by year, and you look at the history of 30A and the feeder roads that go to 30A, and you look at how almost equidistant those roads about every two to three miles. But as you said, Commissioner Chapman, there's a blank spot between Inlet Beach and 395, and common sense should dictate that we need to fill that space and create that pressure valve to, to allow for traffic and emergency vehicles. And, and it makes so much sense to have that feeder road go to where that new school is and to where that, that sports park is. And I love the idea of having a circular bike path route that could be 12 to 15 miles long. So what are the downsides? Obviously, going through the state park and affecting wildlife is an important consideration, and the fire consideration as well. But the power line road just seems like the common sense, obvious solution here. We provide for wildlife corridors, we ensure that there's no development on that road ever, that's imperative. And we ensure that, that that open wide area there is available so that, so the fire department can service that road. You know, we have to be proactive, and as I said, whatever it takes and how, how much it takes, we gotta do whatever we can to try to relieve this situation. It takes about 40 minutes for my home and water sound for me to get to work. And you, you look at how long it takes for people who are staying here to get to those, those places, and they're gonna stop coming. And this isn't gonna be as great a place to live if you can't get to where you need to get to go. Not just when you're having fun, but when emergencies happen. But thank you for your effort, thank you for the time to speak, and thank you.
Thank you. Fred Tricker? And Rob Will is after Mr. Tricker.
Fred Tricker, T-R-I-C-K-E-R. I won't duplicate what Dave just said, I agree with everything he said. I saw his email, I agree with everything in his email. So I don't know if you can do it today in view of the fact that you're missing a key commissioner, but I would love it if y'all could give us an assurance that the next phase of the Atkins... phase of the Atkins study will include a north-south option. And I don't know, is that something you can do today?
No, sir, no. The board's already decided to take a vote whenever Commissioner Anderson can be brought back, so they can't give you an impression today.
I can tell you that I think doing nothing would be, you know, a crime. I think we need to do something. So I can only speak for myself.
Well, yeah, the issue is whether Atkins would include in the next phase both an option going east-west to 395 and one going north and south to Ninety-eight. And I don't know what the exact roadway would be where it would go, but I think that's what the study's all about, the next phase.
Sir, if I understood you, also, aside from a north-south connector, you're talking about an east-west also?
I'm sorry, the Seagrove Bypass.
Okay.
Option four, I called that east-west.
Okay.
And option one would be the north-south corridor.
So you'd like to see two?
Well, at least, it should at least include the option one north-south corridor. I don't personally think that the Seagrove Bypass is going to do much for future traffic. I think the option one, in my opinion, is better. But I think at the end of the day, I think there's a lot more information that we all need to make an informed decision, and I think that's going to come out of the next phase of the study. And there's actually maybe three options on the table, option one, option four, and also a no-build option also needs to be put on the table. We need to have an informed public debate before we make a decision on which way to go. That's all I'm saying.
Legal, do you have any issue with putting option one in the north-south through the power line area?
No, sir, but I think, Mr. Fielding could probably correct me, but I think the idea of today was to have that public debate so the board could rank, you know, which option they prefer.
Well, yeah, but I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think we're at that point. We got environmental considerations. We don't know what the impact is. That's what the next phase is all about. We don't know what the wetlands mitigation is going to look like between the various alternative pathways. I don't think we can make a decision.
Well, I agree with him. We're not at a point today to make that decision, but I think, what I think he's asking is for us to direct Atkins to maybe to start looking into that and reporting back on that. Now, did I misinterpret what you were saying?
That's exactly correct.
But we're going to have to maybe rank them. I mean, we can't go and look into environmental issues until we know where, you know, what area we're looking at. We've got to, as a board, you know, say, rank them one, two, and three in order to look at the environmental impacts, because what would be on, say, number one might not be there on number four. So we at least have to rank them in our mind which is the best, and then go look at these things, because when we get the results back, when they say, whoops, that's not an option, and we move on, you know?
Well, maybe I misunderstood what John Fielding said, but I thought he said that that was really what the next phase is all about, to look at the alternatives.
He's standing right there beside you.
Well, I shouldn't be speaking for him, then. I'm sorry.
John, if you want to kind of elaborate on that, because I don't want to throw the north-south corridor along the power line completely out at this stage of the game.
And not to worry, I'm married with three children, so people speak for me all the time. No, I'm sorry. So the recommendation we're making, and we've made today, is the appropriate environmental clearances process to follow. We would not be asking you to tell us your preferred alternate at this point. We would be asking you to tell us your quote-unquote "general constraints." Do you want us to consider something that ties in from 30A to US Ninety-eight, from 30A to 395, some combination of those, both, neither? You know, if there was something that you wanted to definitely eliminate, that would be something we would ask you to do at the front. So, you know, in any, in any scenario, we always consider the no-build. We always look at what if we did absolutely nothing? And then from there, it's very open-ended. So the point of the process that would go on from this point forward would be to rank these alternatives against each other and for PDNE to make a recommendation to you as commissioners that this is a better alternative than, say, this one over here. So for instance, if we, if we said, let's explore alternate one and alternate four, we would go look at different combinations of alternate four, sort of like we've done now, different combinations of alternate one, and rank those against each other. And we may come back to you and say, based on all the public input, based on all the environmental biology that we've done, we feel that alternate one D is the best alternate, but that would be down the road. Right now, what we're saying is the project environmental impact report process is the appropriate process to go seek those alternates out.
Okay. What did you say?
Hang with me.
I understand. Did you have any other comments?
Excuse me?
No.
Could I just have a few seconds? I just got one more point that I don't think.
Really quick second.
Yeah, really quick. The alternate path, the so-called power line road, there's another aspect to that, too, and that is the West Bay Parkway, which is the direct road going from Ninety-eight up to the airport, I believe is going to tie into Ninety-eight at about that area. So to me, that's an added benefit to going with the option one choice.
That's the first time I've heard that, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rob Wheel?
Robert Wheel, last name W-E-I-L. Just wanted to stand up here and say that I reviewed some of these things, and I tend to like the power line road. Wouldn't want to duplicate too much that Mr. Rochkopf said because he really did mention a lot of things that I was thinking. I also wanted to include the fact that, as Commissioner Commander stated, we do need to have a mine for the next five years, ten years, going into the future. We're seeing a lot of infill around the Eastern Lake area and the Lakewood area, and I think those people are going to want that north-south connector because they're not just going west when they need to get to Ninety-eight, they're also going east, and that puts them going towards Watersun Parkway, and that's starting to get burdened as well. It's distant for them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Murphy?
He had the way.
Okay, Demetrius Navarro? Demetrius Navarro? Charles Rigdon? Mr. Rigdon?
Mr. Chairman, Charles Rigdon. I wasn't going to speak today. I was just going to listen, and then I heard that the, all the different alternatives, and I decided to sign up. I know that whatever I say probably is kind of tainted because we own property on Highway Ninety-eight, but I have always believed that the north-south corridor is the proper access, tying from 30A back into 395 just basically moves the problem north. I also heard earlier that, you know, that the, that the state would not allow the road. The state allows roads in state parks all the time. All that would take would be a request from the local government and then the, excuse me, the governor and the cabinet make that decision, and it's for the benefit of the local people. You have appropriated tremendous amounts of money for South Walton. The sports park and the school board spending thirty-five million dollars on school. So it makes a lot of sense to be able to have the residents to get back and forth to that area in a timely fashion. And then finally, as some of us that have been in this area a long time, we kind of have a tendency, the newer people, to forget that hurricane evacuations and fire evacuations. About twenty-five years ago, there was a bad fire in the, in the area down here, and a lot of people almost didn't get out. And there is no north-south exit in the Watersun area. And so those things, and finally, the quality of life, kids on school buses, people trying to get back and forth to church, people trying to get back and forth to their offices, to their places of worship and their places of business. And I think that, I know, as a lot of us that are sitting in the audience, we say, God, we were here in 2005, and we just hope that we're not sitting here in 2025 having these same issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Janelle Schrader?
Jared Schneider.
Jerry? Or Jared?
Jared. Jared Schneider, last name S-C-H-N-A-D-E-R. Thank you, everyone, for staying around for this. And just looking at the proposals, the only problem I see with all of them is that it's not a long-term solution. We're talking about building a road in five years. I find it very hard to believe that no one else is going to come in here in five years in a two-lane road. Also, it doesn't address the amount of cars that you're going to put in efficiently onto 30A, to two-lane road. There's nowhere for them to go. It's actually going to create more traffic going up and down 30A. As I'm sure, you know, Atkins can probably attest to, there's Braze's paradox to actually worry about. When you add in more vehicles to a, like an already trans, or a crowded transit system or crowded system, and you start adding more roads in, you can actually create slower traffic through there. That's a very big concern I think we really need to look at. One of the only options that I see that has happened and been effective throughout the world is getting a transit system in here, an actual effective transit system that works. I know there is a proposal for the 30A Mobility Project, which I personally support. It's a fantastic idea, but just adding in a north-south, east-west, whatever is connector road is just going to increase the amount of traffic that you have on 30A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Zonia, Z-O-N-I-A. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to speak against any road through the forest. You'll never get back this beautiful expanse of space, even if you set aside some parcel somewhere. I believe that none of the residents near, living near 30A want more development. The conditions in some areas are so crowded now that it almost feels like a barrio down there. The only way to stop this steady build-out of every postage-stamped piece of land is to say no to new roads. It's my opinion that if we could improve the efficiency of 30A, there would not be a need for a twelve-million-dollar road through the forest. I have a simple request. We're going to be putting in lights this winter, this fall. We're going to be doing some construction there. Please do a trial of moving the multi-use trail to the south side of 30A. It would be part of putting these lights in and maybe, you know, putting the turn lane in. According to the Atkins study, they believe that just moving the crosswalk to the south side would improve the efficiency by eighty percent. If you find that this simple measure, which in all honesty could be done with a can of spray paint and some traffic cones today, if you find that this does greatly improve the efficiency of the current roadway, then you'll need to consider some next steps. But for now, for today, I'm asking that you simply try it on a temporary basis to see what the results are. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Zalas? Eric, okay. Alan Fekera?
Chief Talbert.
Jeff Talbert? Chief Talbert? Or Jeff, no, a different Talbert.
Same line.
Oh, son, great. Okay, great.
Jeff Talbert, T-A-L-B-E-R-T. I just want to say that, real brief, and full disclosure, I do have a professional interest in the state forests and the state parks in the area. I don't want to see us put any roads and fragment any habitat. I see what goes on out there. I get to experience the beautiful plants and the animals every single day, and it would be devastating to see anything happen to that. Keep saying, look, long-term, I don't think you're looking long enough term. I'm thinking hundreds and hundreds of years down the road, what is this area going to look like? And that's part of the project that we work on, is a long-term, hundred, two-hundred-year project and making this area a better place. And I would hate to see that legacy trampled on by an impermeable surface. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Hammett? Did he leave? Okay, Richard Buquet? Okay, Frank Day?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Larry, how are you? Thank y'all for holding this meeting. Moved back home in 1986 and started building houses in Seaside when they're all dirt roads, except for 30A. From that time to the present, I'm assuming there has been no reduction in the width of the right-of-way on 30A. It still sits at seventy feet, is my understanding. Adequate room if we remove the encroachments on that right-of-way to add two lanes, the entire length of it. That, right off the get-go, would alleviate some of the problems where it starts at on 30A itself. It would, of course, two lanes, four-lane road through the length of 30A would not be the end of the solution, but it would certainly handle what we have today and perhaps on for an additional ten years. At some point, there has to be some ingress and egress, north and south, out of the Seagrove area, and in time, more than likely, on the west end of 30A as well. May I recommend tying in my suggestion of, I'm about to iterate here, with the gentleman earlier in aligning the Seagrove area with the school, but particularly with the planned West Bay Parkway. But do it as a flyover. If we've got to cross that, do it as a flyover, much like Bay County has done from the Hathaway Bridge, past the college, Thomas Drive on the, on the west end of the bridge as well. Do a flyover with zero impact on wildlife, the environment. Many, many different ways to approach that then, segment it, starting at the Ninety-eight end. And then if you have to have a road through there, only dedicated to the time in which you can connect segments as funding comes available. But the flyover for the alleviation down, downrange would be the answer for that. It's only three, a little over three miles long, and would create a flyover over Ninety-eight as well with classic interstate cloverleaf access to Ninety-eight off of it or continuing straight on to West Bay. Literally could give you a twenty-minute drive from anywhere along Seagrove, Seaside to the airport. That's, that's the best-case scenario. The development occurred on three, on, on 30A, and that's where the congestion is. Another alternative on the quick side would be, as has been suggested, moving that bike path to the south side. That's the greatest common sense solution to that. And then on Saturday, check out one-way only on 395 out. Thank you.
Jeff Ragland?
Jeff Ragland.
Jeff Ragland.
This is Jeff Ragland, spelled R-A-G-L-A-N-D. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I appreciate the opportunity. I wish I had a solution. I've heard a lot here today that I think sounded pretty good from citizens who've come up, but I wish I had something I could offer you and say, dang, why didn't I think of that? But I'm really up here right now because of just a pure love for this area. What we have here is unique. The state forest is a gem, along with the coastal dune lakes and our beach. Collectively, those are the things that have brought all these folks here, that's created this situation with traffic to begin with. So I'm, I'm really personally concerned more about the protection of this natural area. I've had the privilege of going through the Florida Master Naturalist Program, and it took me into seeing it in a much more deeper way. Spent a lot of time out there. I spent a lot of time on the trails running. And during the years I've been here, I've continued to grow in my love for this area and particularly for that, for that state forest. I have some friends of mine who come down and visit as guests, and of course, they love the beach and they love the coastal dune lakes, but one other thing they mentioned is they can't believe how beautiful the forest around here is that it's protected like it is. It's so unique, especially coming from New Jersey, where every square inch of the land up there is developed. So I just want to express an opinion and give you my feelings, not so much another solution. I think the ones I've heard here today about improving certain things along 30A, the intersection at 395, but I just don't feel like that. But I just don't feel like that cutting the roads through the state forest is going to give us, it might give you a more temporary fix. But I think his thoughts about this being long-term, more like 100 years is what we need to be thinking about, something in the long term. I don't believe that we should start fragmenting that, developing that state forest out there, that land. I appreciate you allowing me to get up here and speak. I'm just trying to share my opinion about it more than anything. But it's just a privilege to be able to be up here and speak with you about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ragland, very much. That's our last speaker. So I guess the means adjourned. When Commissioner Anderson gets a chance to look at this, then we'll reconvene at another time and discuss our options. You maybe rank the, go forward with that. Is there anything else you want to cover before we adjourn? I think you've done it, Madam Chairman. All right, we adjourn.